Good morning. I want to welcome everybody to the January 16th, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting on the Comprehensive Plan Amendments. Today I have the great honor of not only leading us in the pledge of allegiance, but also in an opening with prayer. So those that are willing and able, please stand. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together today safely. We ask your blessings upon this body and also upon those who come to speak to us, to give us insight and comments about how we can make this a better county that we can all live in and treasure and appreciate all the magnificities that you give us, both in this county and this great country. So I lift spoken and unspoken concerns in your hands, and I always, as always, I ask special blessings upon those that wear the uniform and protect our freedoms. We ask this in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Did I do this last year, too?
Yeah, it was your first. You probably didn't remember it.
Okay. Jason, don't mess it up. It's all yours. You have the podium.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, and good morning, Commissioners. I'm Jason Gaines with Cobb County Community Development. We are here today for our annual Comprehensive Plan Amendment process. Each year, the Board of Commissioners considers amendments to the future land use map and the text contained within Cobb County's Comprehensive Plan, primarily based on rezoning decisions that do not align with the recommendations of the future land use plan. Those items, or zoning decisions, as we refer to them as, cover a period from October of 2016 through September of 2017. So we have the zoning decisions, we have commissioner proposals, which are items that are brought forward by either a district commissioner or staff to address some sort of future land use anomaly or inconsistency. And then we have staff proposals, which are essentially the same, but are brought forward by staff. We have a total of 16 zoning decisions, 21 commissioner proposals, and one staff proposal. So with that, I also like to mention that this process, just to clarify for the public, this process is different from that which zoning is conducted and for which rezonings are advertised. And just so everyone knows, we have followed all of the procedures set forth by the Board of Commissioners concerning the Comprehensive Plan Amendment process. And with that, we will get right into our zoning decisions, starting with ZD-1. ZD-1 is based on zoning case Z78 of 2016. It's located in Commission District 2 on the north side of Manor Road, south of Plant Atkinson Road. The proposal is to go from industrial to high-density residential. The planning commission, which heard all of these items on January 4th, 2018, recommended approval of this particular item.
So is there anyone here that would like to discuss zoning decision 1?
And just for further clarity, if there's no one who wants to discuss the item or has objection to the item, we'll just move on to the next. For those that are pulled for discussion, we'll hear each of them individually. And for those that are not, you'll vote on them as one block, sort of like a consent agenda.
Yeah, I just got to give people a bit of extra time because I can't see all the way in the back because it's kind of dark back there. So I just want to make sure everybody has the opportunity to make a comment if they so choose. So seeing none, we'll move on to the next one.
Okay. ZD-2 is in Commission District 4, located on the south side of Powder Springs Road, east of Sanders Road, based on zoning case Z83 of 2016. The proposal is to go from industrial compatible to public institution. Planning Commission recommended approval of this item.
Is there anyone here that would like to comment or have an objection to this recommendation from the audience? And any of the Commissioners like to comment on this? Okay, seeing none?
Okay. ZD-3 is located in Commission District 2. It's located on the northwest side of Paces Mill Road, east of Paces Ferry Road. It's based on case Z90 of 2016. The proposal is to go from Neighborhood Activity Center to High Density Residential. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on ZD-3? Is there anyone on the board that would like to comment on this? Okay, next.
Okay. ZD-4 is in Commission District 3, located at the southwest intersection of Shalifer Road and Jamerson Road, north of Backwoods Court, and at the eastern terminus of Hart Drive. It's based on case Z80 of 2016. The proposal is to go from medium-density residential, low-density residential, and industrial-compatible to high-density residential. Planning Commission recommended deletion from HDR to MDR, medium-density residential.
Okay.
Shouldn't that be keep it, MDR?
Well, you've got a tract that consists of multiple parcels where there are three different future land use classifications, one of which is MDR. So instead of switching entirely to HDR, the recommendation is to switch entirely to MDR.
And I'm going to agree with that.
Okay. So is there anyone in the audience that has a comment or objection to the deletion of MDR? And are there any other comments from the board? Seeing none?
Okay. ZD-5 is in Commission District 3, located on the west side of Canton Road, north of Kensington Drive. It's based on case Z95 of 2016. The proposal is to go from Neighborhood Activity Center to industrial-compatible. Planning Commission recommends denial of this item.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment or object to the recommendation for denial of this, of ZD-5? Seeing none, anyone from the board?
Okay.
Okay, we're good.
ZD-6 is also in Commission District 3. It's also located on the west side of Canton Road, this time north of Dover Street. It's based on case Z105 of 2016. The proposal is to go from Neighborhood Activity Center to Community Activity Center. Planning Commission recommends denial of this item.
And is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment or object to the recommendation denial on ZD-6? Anyone from the board like to comment? Seeing none?
ZD-7 is in Commission District 4. It's located on the north side of Blair Bridge Road, east of Bridgeport Court. It's based on case Z106 of 2016. The proposal is to go from medium-density residential to Neighborhood Activity Center. Planning Commission recommends approval.
And is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment or object to the recommendation to re-designate to NAC? Any comments from the board? Seeing none?
ZD-8 is in Commission District 4 as well, located at the southeast intersection of Pat Mill and Favor Roads, based on case Z6 of 2017. The proposal is to go from Neighborhood Activity Center and High Density Residential to Neighborhood Activity Center in its entirety. Planning Commission recommends approval.
And is there anyone that would like to comment or object to the recommendation to re-designate to NAC for ZD-8? Anyone from the board? We're good.
ZD-9 is in Commission District 3, located on the south side of Ernest Barrett Parkway, both the east and west sides of Barrett Creek Boulevard, and on the south side of Barrett Creek Parkway. It's based on case Z7 of 2017. The proposal is to go from Community Activity Center and Neighborhood Activity Center to High Density Residential. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
And is there in the audience that would like to comment on or object to the designation to HDR for ZD-9? Anyone from the board? Seeing none?
ZD-10 is in Commission District 3, located on the southeast side of Lee Waters Road, at its terminus, south of Jamerson Road. This is based on case Z11 of 2017. The proposal is to go from industrial-compatible to medium-density residential. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on or object to the re-designation to medium-density residential for ZD-10? Anyone from the board? Seeing none?
ZD-11 is in Commission District 3. It's located on the east side of Blackwell Circle, south of Chastain Corner. It's based on case Z29 of 2017. The proposal is to go from Neighborhood Activity Center to Low Density Residential. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on or object to the re-designation to Low Density Residential for ZD-11? Anyone from the board? Seeing none?
ZD-12 is in Commission District 3. It's located on the northwest corner of Shalifer Road and Shallow Farm Drive. It's based on case Z33 of 2017. The proposal is to go from Low Density Residential to Medium Density Residential. Planning Commission recommends denial of this item.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on or object to the denial for the re-designation to, of ZD-12 to Medium Density Residential? How about from the board? Okay, let's see.
ZD-13 is in Commission District 3. It's located on the west side of Atlanta Road, south of Ledford Street. It's based on case Z25 of 2017. The proposal is to go from Community Activity Center and Industrial Compatible to High Density Residential. The Planning Commission recommends approval of this item.
And is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on or object to the re-designation of ZD-13 to High Density Residential? Anyone on the board have a comment? Seeing none?
ZD-14 is in Commission District 1. It's located on the north side of Dallas Highway, east of Martin Ridge Drive. It's based on case Z48 of 2017. The proposal is to go from Low Density Residential to Neighborhood Activity Center. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on or object to the proposal in ZD-14 for this parcel to be re-designated to Neighborhood Activity Center? Anyone from the board? Seeing none?
ZD-15 is located in Commission District 2. It's located on the south side of Church Road, east of South Cobb Drive. It's based on case Z55 of 2017. The proposal is to go from Medium Density Residential to Neighborhood Activity Center. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on or object to the proposal in ZD-15 for this parcel to be re-designated to Neighborhood Activity Center? Anybody from the board? Seeing none?
ZD-16 is located in Commission District 4. It's located on the north side of Hurt Road, and the east side of Floyd Road. It's based on case Z43 of 2017. The proposal is to go from Community Activity Center to High Density Residential. The Planning Commission recommends deletion from High Density Residential to Medium Density Residential.
Does anyone in the audience have to have a comment or object to the proposal in ZD-16 for the property being re-designated, being deleted to Medium Density Residential? You ready on the board?
Yes, Chairman.
Sure.
I would like to retain the current future land use designation as CAC. The MDR deletion isn't fitting for this area, which is already located in a significant CAC area. Staff recommended rezoning based off of, I mean, excuse me, change in designation to High Density Residential based off of the zoning decision. But it's my understanding that within a CAC, you can still have High Density Residential. So it just makes sense to keep the future land use map as it is.
So we can go ahead and pull this one?
Yes, sir.
And discuss it later?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll pull this one. Okay.
You may want to deny it, sir. Oops. That's an option as well. The board has either option, either pull or deny.
Right, because if you deny it, it remains the existing classification of Community Activity Center. So that is an option.
I'm sorry. Yeah, because see, first, this is going to be consent agenda once we get through all this. So to change that to deny, we'd have to do a different action, wouldn't we? Wouldn't we have to pull it and then do a deny?
And have a separate motion on it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, right, exactly.
Right.
We'll go ahead and pull that, and then we'll bring it back for the action, which will probably follow a Commissioner Cupid proposal, recommendation.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Sure.
Do we need to do that or all the ones that are reversed?
We're accepting Planning Commission's recommendation on these. We're just not accepting on this.
You're accepting. They denied, the Planning Commission recommended denial on ZD-12, and you're wanting to stick with that recommendation. So you're accepting their recommendation. So you don't have to pull it.
And that's how we agree with you.
Right.
Correct.
As revised, sure. Because we're going to be pulling one from the agenda. Okay, so we'll pull this one and just bring that back to the regular agenda, or whatever we call it. Well, I said it's regular, so that's what it's going to be.
Well, the regular agenda will be based on the type of item. So since that's the last zoning decision, you would now vote on the consent portion of the zoning decision agenda. And then we would come back and hear that one item that was pulled.
Okay, so I, I'm sorry. Well, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve, all right? The consent agenda as, hold on, I'm going to make a motion to approve the consent agenda is revised, all right? And then I'll get a second, and then we'll have comments, okay? Because you want to come up and talk about these items?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll have discussion period, all right? So I'm going to make a motion to approve the zoning decisions as revised. Whoops.
I'm sorry. If you want to allow public comment, you can't make the motion before because you either leave the public comment open or close it.
Okay.
Before your motion.
I was going to bring him in. I just tried my way to be a lot smoother. Fine. Ron?
We have public comment.
Commissioners, the land use plan amendment package normally is sent out to the email list that community development maintains. To, when it's available to the public, they send it out to the email list of everybody who's on the list. They did not do that this year for the land use plan amendments. They did on the zoning code amendments, on the code amendments, but not on the land use plan amendments. I didn't even try to search. I finally sent Dana an email after Christmas, trying to find out when he was going to send out the package, and I got a link. Other CCCC members did start searching for it, but nobody found this package within 30 days before today. So if we're supposed to have 30 days' notice for public hearings before you all make a decision, we didn't get 30 days' notice. I would ask that you all not take a vote on any of the land use plan amendments today, and instead, schedule at least one more public hearing, because so far, we had one on January 4th and today, and neither of those are 30 days after anybody that I know of even found the land use plan amendments. And the practice in the past was to send out the land use plan amendments to everybody on the list. That did not happen this year. So I would ask you all to delay this vote. Thank you. Or schedule another, not take a vote today, and schedule one more public hearing before taking this vote. Thank you.
And Dana?
I just want to, I just want to, I just want to talk to the comment about the posting of the zoning decisions in the 30-day notice.
Sir, all of the postings have occurred pursuant to the rules and procedures, as has been established by the Board of Commissioners, for all Comprehensive Plan Amendments and future land use map amendments. Under Section 10, Item B of the Comprehensive Plan Amendments as established by the Board of Commissioners, it states that at least two public hearings shall be conducted by the Board of Commissioners following advertisement and posting at least 15 days prior to consideration of adoption of the proposed amendments. 15 days has occurred for the posting of all the properties as it relates to it, and all of the advertising with the Marietta Daily Journal has occurred pursuant to the Board of Commissioners procedures. So from staff's opinion, all of our procedures have been done in accordance with the rules established by the Board.
Okay, so when were the Marietta Daily Journal advertisements made? Do we know?
I'm going to ask Mr. Gaines to address that, since he has the specific timeline of each particular item.
You can stay right there, Carol. It's okay. We're just going to have this friendly conversation. You're family. It's okay.
Marietta Daily Journal, legal advertisements ran on December 22nd and 29th. In addition to the legal advertisements, signs posted in the proximity of the properties by Cobb DOT on the week of December 18th. The week of December 11th, all impacted property owners received letters, or the mailing of those letters was made, to property owners directly impacted by each of the items. So that's the full course of how we notify the public impacted property owners.
What about the emails that Ron was talking about? Is this like a female grouping or what?
I will address that, sir. And the code amendments are different than the Comprehensive Plan Amendments. The code amendments are different because it touches a lot of different areas of the county: public safety, DOT, codes that deal with administration-like economic development. So that is not the same list as it relates to it. This year, which we've never had before in community development, we now have a newsletter. We are providing information to the public about these exact things within our newsletter to make sure that people are aware of what's happening in community development and when documents are available online.
Okay, all right.
And also, we post in our newsletters, too, all the public meetings and give notice of this particular meeting and all our board meetings and zoning as well in our newsletters.
Okay. Thank you, Jason, and good morning, Frau.
Chairman, if I may.
Oops, I'm sorry. We're going to get to you. You're good, Jason. Thank you.
I have no concern about whether or not staff follow a process or not based off of the information shared. It may seem as a path moving forward, though, that it would be helpful to put the code amendment package through that email list that Ron is talking about, so that they do have that as a means of learning about the changes. And it's probably those who are interested in zoning probably have a similar interest in the code amendment package. So it just says a courtesy, not as, I'm not saying it's a requirement. It may be helpful moving forward.
Okay, that's a good idea. Good morning.
Hi, Carol Brown with Canton Road Neighbors. And I probably shouldn't inject myself into this, but I just want to comment that I received, ECCA actually forwarded me the comp plan amendments on December 19th. And, you know, it took me all of about five minutes to review the items of interest, and I forwarded them on to people in our group that I thought would be interested. I was here on January 4th, and there were quite a few people here. Most of them were actually homeowners here as a result of seeing the signs posted on their property. The evening was without controversy, and as you can see now, most of the ZDs are on consent agenda.
Right.
And I think that everything went very smoothly. I don't see why we should be put through an additional hearing, just because a handful of people apparently didn't receive or weren't able to access the comp plan amendments in a timely fashion. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brown. Yes, Commissioner.
I just want to agree with Carol. ECCA got the information. It was not, it was not available. And nothing's different than it's been every single year that we've done this. And so, you know, to say that we need to change the procedure, the stuff was out there if you wanted to go get it. I mean, I think that the issue is that when this particular group had their meeting, it didn't coincide with when the stuff came out. And that's really what this is all about. And so I don't think that, I think staff did what they were supposed to do. They did it right, and the information was available.
Okay. All right. So now we can vote on.
The consent portion of the zoning decision.
Exactly. So I want to make a motion to do that. Is that all right with everybody? All right? No, I'm going to say I move that we approve the ZD amendments as read and revised.
Excluding ZD-16.
That's what I'm saying. It's revised, and that's where we're going to take, we pull ZD-16 from the, from the agenda. We have a second? Any other discussion? Call a question. Passify to zero. Okay, now we'll talk about ZD-16. And I'll leave that in your hands. Commissioner Cupid?
Based on past discussion, I move that we deny the Planning Commission's recommendation for ZD-16.
Okay, we have a second? We have a second? Any discussion? Call a question. Passify to zero. Okay. Now on to the Commissioner proposal, right?
Yes. We have a total of 21 commissioner proposal items, starting with three in Commission District 1. First item is CP11. It consists of 11 parcels located on the north and south sides of Stanley Road. The proposal is to go from low-density residential to medium-density residential. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
I'm sorry. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on or object to Commissioner's Proposal 1-1 being re-designated to Medium Density Residential? We have, in the back, yes, we have one. So we'll have to pull that. Sorry?
Each one needs a debate.
Well, we can do that, too.
Yeah. I don't know if we want to do them all and then come back.
Well, I think it'd be easier if we just read them all and then came back and addressed them individually.
Okay.
All right. All right. So I appreciate your idea.
CP12 is located, it consists of one parcel located on the east side of Hiram-Aquith Highway and south of Sayre Drive. The proposal is to go from very low-density residential to public institution. The Planning Commission recommends denial.
And is there in the audience that would like to comment on or object to the denial of Commissioner, of Commissioner Proposal 1-2? Seeing none. Anybody coming on the board? Sure.
Mr. Gaines, the purpose of this was, I believe there's a church here, correct?
Yes, sir.
And staff's recommendation was it was a future land use category for church property?
Yes, sir.
I mean, does this matter one way or the other? I guess what I'm trying to understand. I thought we, one of the things we did several years ago when I got here is we went through and we're trying to clean them all, the different areas that were land use that didn't match current zoning or current uses.
Mm-hmm.
In the great scheme of things, it doesn't really matter one way or the other. But this is typically what we do when our church is taking over residential, correct?
It is. It is common practice. It doesn't happen in every instance. I think, based on public feedback at the Planning Commission hearing, the concern was that it's a rather large parcel, about 14 acres. The actual church building and parking area takes up a very small portion of the parcel. And surrounding homeowners felt like if there were ever an instance where the church was to cease operation and the land use were to change, you know, that their desire would be for it to remain residential and not have it to where another institutional use could come in that would have a greater impact on the area in terms of noise, light, traffic, et cetera. So I think that was the main concern that the public brought forth at the Planning Commission hearing.
Okay, perfect. Then I agree with this on this.
Okay.
So are you agreeing to change it or deny it?
No, to deny it.
To deny it, right. He agrees with the Planning Commission's proposal. Sure, no problem. Great. Okay.
Okay. CP13 consists of two parcels located on the north side of Dallas Highway, east of Bob Cox of Bob Cox Road. The proposal is to go from rural residential to neighborhood activity center with the following text amendment. "In an effort to mitigate any future land use conflicts between surrounding residential uses and commercial uses, it is recommended that the planning commission and Board of Commissioners consider additional and enhanced buffering and screening requirements on any development or redevelopment of tracks within the NAC on the northeast side of Dallas Highway and southeast side of Bob Cox Road. It is also recommended that they require any development of these parcels to be done in a manner cognizant of the need to mitigate impacts to the headwater of the water course on the northeast side of parcel ID two-zero-zero-zero-three-three-two-zero-zero-zero-two-zero. This is intended to further protect the existing residential uses and natural resources of the county. The planning commission's recommendation was to deny."
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment or object to the recommendation to deny Commissioner's proposal one-dash-three? Anybody on the board? Commissioner Weatherford?
No, I just wanna say this particular piece of property's come up several times in the past. I don't believe it should be rural residential, but I'm not sure it should be LRO, because we don't really, that's not our R R area. But each one of these comes back before us individually when there is a zoning, so I agree with the commission, the planning commission, and I'll leave it the way it is.
Okay.
Okay. And we have seven CP items in Commission District Two. CP two-one consists of multiple parcels on the north side of Johnson Ferry Road and south of Caris Gate Drive. Proposal is to go from community activity center to low-density residential. Planning commission recommends approval.
Is that Caris Gate or Carl's Gate? Cause I was, I was reading that yesterday. Carl's Gate is on the north side of Johnson Ferry, right?
Yeah, no, that's not Carl's Gate. This is, this is already there.
Okay, I'm just curious.
This is, um, back by, behind the Chicklay.
Oh, okay, that's different.
You know the cluster homes?
Right.
Back there.
Okay.
Right, yeah. Yeah, it's not Carl's Gate.
I said, I said Caris, but it's Caris, pardon.
Okay.
Might sound like Carl's when it came out, but it's Caris.
Okay, so, is there anyone that has a comment or objection to the proposal for Commissioner's proposal two-dash-one to re-designate to low-density residential? Anybody on the board? We're good, for Mr. Caris Gate.
CP two-two consists of multiple parcels on the south side of Johnson Ferry Road and south of Woodlong Parkway. Proposal is to go from low-density residential to medium-density residential. Planning commission recommends approval.
And is there anyone in the audience that'd like to comment on or object to the recommendation, Commissioner's proposal two-dash-two to re-designate to medium-density residential? Anybody on the board? Okay, see none?
CP two-three consists of three parcels on the east side of Atlanta Road and on the north and south sides of Cantrell Road. Proposal is to go from medium-density residential to neighborhood activity center. Planning commission recommends approval.
And is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on or object to the proposal to re-designate, Commissioner's proposal two-dash-two to designate these parcels to neighborhood activity center? Any comments from the board? See none?
CP two-four consists of three parcels on the west side of Atlanta Road, north of Cooper Lake Drive. Proposal is to go from medium-density residential to neighborhood activity center. Planning commission recommends approval.
Is there in the audience that'd like to comment on or object to the proposal on Commissioner's proposal two-dash-four to re-designate to neighborhood activity center? On the board? Commissioner Ott?
I just wanna mention that the staff proposal, the one that we have, is related to this.
Okay.
It's actually a text amendment, but because it deals with more than just this one part is why it's a staff proposal by itself.
Okay.
But it basically addresses the inability or directing the board not to allow expansion beyond here, but since it dealt with more than just this part, we made it a separate staff proposal. So when you see that, that's, this is where it's referring.
Alright. I'll wait with bated breath.
CP two-five consists of a parcel located on the east side of Windy Hill Road and south of Wildwood Parkway. The proposal is to go from regional activity center office subcategory to regional activity center high-density residential subcategory. Planning commission recommends approval.
Does anybody in the audience have a comment or objection to the proposal on Commissioner's proposal two-dash-five to re-designate to high-density, regional activity center subcategory of high-density residential? I, I have a couple of questions here. Seems kind of unusual to put that, it's already a rack, and now we're gonna put apartments in there, or what?
Well, actually, it's, it's a continuation of what's happening in Wildwood, where, I mean, the whole Wildwood is a rack, and it's all, um, high office, you know, office buildings and everything else. And what's happened is, as more residential communities move in, we've, we've had to go back and change, and there's actually zoning going through the process right now to put residential here.
And what kind of residential you plan to put there?
Townhomes.
Townhomes?
Which is consistent with what else is in the area. You have, on the backside of the circle there, we're up where the, on the upper right-hand corner is where there's some hikes, expensive townhomes, and then Rivers Call. And then as you go down Windy Hill, getting closer to Powers Ferry, you have townhomes, and then you have townhomes along Powers Ferry.
Would, would these townhomes have access to the trail systems we're putting in there, Commissioner?
Well, everybody in here would have access to the trail systems.
Okay.
So, and then the, the proposal for the circulator change would actually during the day comes up around this circle.
Right.
During the day, and then at night it would kind of shrink back down.
Is that where GE Power is back in there?
Yeah, GE Power is here, this is the I and P building.
Oh, okay.
On the fountain, you know, the big fountain?
Right.
That's where this is.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? I see none.
CP two-six consists of two parcels on the east side of Beach Haven Trail, south of Gilmore Road. The proposal is to go from regional activity center with office and public institution subcategories to regional activity center with high-density residential subcategory. The planning commission recommends approval.
Do, okay, does anybody in the audience have any comments or objections to Commissioner's proposal two-dash-six for the re-designation to regional activity center or the subcategory of high-density residential? And I'm guessing the same sort of eye concept?
Well, no, this one's a little bit different in the fact that some of the groups, the homeowner groups have asked in the past that instead of approving a zoning, then having to come back and change the land use map, that if a zoning's coming forward, that the board should put in front of the community the proposed land use map change first to discuss it. And so there is actually a zoning for some townhomes coming forward on this piece of property, but if you look around it, it's high-density residential below it.
Right.
And so the townhomes, it's, it's a good location. So this is really just trying to meet the requests of the homeowners, that when I knew about a zoning ahead of time, to bring the land use map first.
And we have one, yes, do you wanna comment on it? Do you, do you wanna have it polled, or just wanna comment? Okay. Sure. Thanks.
Good morning, I'm Ron Siphon, and, yes, I'm one of the citizens who thinks that it's good to have, when you have a zoning that's gonna be in conflict with the land use plan, I think it's best to have a land use plan hearing first where you just simply discuss what is the most appropriate land use for this property? Is the current designation more appropriate than the proposed, or is the proposed designation more appropriate? In this particular case, the, the, if you look at the area, the proposed designation is far more appropriate than the current designation. So, yes, I would definitely agree with this change. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Any other comments from the audience or the board? Okay. See none. Okay, we're good.
Alright. CP two-seven consists of one parcel on the west side of Cumberland Parkway, east of I-285 and north of Mount Wilkinson Parkway. The proposal is to go from regional activity center with the open space recreation subcategory to the regional activity center with the office subcategory. The planning commission recommends approval, however, I'd like to note that the wrong parcel was actually identified for this particular item. We looked on Cumberland Parkway, but the parcel is actually located on Spring Hill Parkway on the opposite side of 285. With that...
Well, let me jump in here, try to bail you out. What happened was that this is another one of those prior to a zoning that's gonna be filed for a self-storage facility. In the discussions with staff, we just got on the wrong side of the road. It's actually, if you look at the rack area on the other side of 285, that's actually where it was supposed to be.
That's the real rack.
No, they're both, no, their designations are correct, but it should be the one that's highlighted there, so what I'm gonna propose was, and they caught it after the planning commission had already heard it, that's why they approved it.
Well, how could you, how could the planning commission, Ron, approve this? It's got the wrong map.
No, no, they didn't know at the time that it, it was discovered, the error was discovered after the planning commission had already heard the case.
So, let me see if I understand this. When the planning commission heard this case, did they knew, did they, that, that they thought that the rack that was in a consideration was on the right side of 285, right?
Correct.
Okay. When in fact, it's the one on the left side.
Correct. And because this was one that with an upcoming zoning.
Right.
There was no other information for them to know that they were on the wrong side. But afterwards, when we started talking about it and talked to the, the future applicant, it was determined that it's actually supposed to be on the other side of the road. So my recommendation would be that we pull this item.
Right.
And allow it to be re-advertised, and that then in our February zoning hearing.
Right.
We'll hear this as another business item.
I think that, I think that's a fair approach. So...
Mr. Chairman?
We, we have to do the process again, because it wasn't advertised.
It'll have to go back to the planning commission as well.
Right, and that's why we proposed to have it come to the February zoning cycle, because it can be advertised with sufficient time.
Right.
It can then go through the planning commission as other business, and then, and, and once again, this is another one where, you know, out of respect for the request from the community, a zoning's coming forward, which I, I don't think the land use change plan is a problem. So that's how we kind of got where we are, and that's why I'd like to have it considered in February.
Okay, so we're gonna pull this one.
Correct.
Chairman.
We have all kinds of comments. I'll start with, I'll start with Commissioner Burrow, then work down to you, Commissioner Cupid.
So if, if it's gotta go back before the planning commission, we don't have thirty days before they're next here.
It's other business.
The requirement for posting is fifteen days, ma'am.
Okay. I, I just wanna be clear.
Okay, Commissioner Cupid.
Part of a broader conversation, am I hearing implied support for there to be a future land use map change if you recognize a zoning is going to conflict?
Yes and no, I mean, the reason I did these was because of timing. We'd always do this in January, it just so happened that these particular ones, someone had come and talked to me about a zoning prior, with enough time to get it in the book.
Okay.
Okay, no, I'm not proposing that we do it all the time, but it just so happened that it worked out this time.
Okay.
And so, and, and that's what I told them in the past, that, you know, hey, if it works out, timing-wise, then I'm fine with putting it in the book in January.
Okay, very good.
So that's why these are here.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
That'd be, then we could have these meetings going to, to the evening.
You'll be sitting here by yourself.
Okay, so are you, are you comfortable with that answer, Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, I am, cause that would be a significant shift, and I'm not, I'm not going to say that there isn't some element of, um, interests in, you know, from other community members for it, but I also view the future land use map as a guide, which would be contradicted if we were to make this a practice.
Right, exactly.
Right, like I said, it just, it just so happened to work out timing-wise.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
And we don't all have a crystal ball to know what's
Yes.
gonna change.
Okay.
You could've moved 285. That'd made it easier, yes. Anyway, okay, so we're gonna pull this one, and we're all in agreement on that, okay?
Right, pull it and bring it corrected back and...
Back, we'll reinsert it into the process to come back. Sure.
Alright, we have five CP items in Commission District Three. CP three-one consists of two parcels on the south side of New Chastain Road. Proposal is to go from high-density residential and low-density residential to parks, recreation, conservation. Planning commission recommends approval.
So, is there any, do I hear any comments or objections from the, from the public on Commissioner's proposal three-dash-one being re-designated to park, recreation, conservation? Okay, see none from the board? Okay.
CP three-two consists of five parcels on the east side of Bells Ferry Road and south of Lloyd Drive. Proposal is to go from low-density residential to parks, recreation, and conservation. Planning commission recommends approval.
And do I hear any comments or objections from the audience? I see one. Okay, do you wanna, you wanna have it polled and discuss? Okay, come on up, sir.
I just wanna ask what the designation for the Parks and Recreations would be.
Just let us know what your name is, sir.
Mike Henson.
Okay, hi, Mike. Okay, and your question is?
Just wanna know what the designation for the Parks and Recreations would be? In lieu of the parcel.
Sure, you or Jason, either one.
That's correct, ma'am, but I'm gonna go ahead and read the, the, the description of Parks, Recreation, Conservation as it's listed in our comprehensive plan. "The purpose of the Park, Recreation, Conservation category is to provide for land dedicated to active or passive recreational uses, either publicly or privately owned, including playgrounds, public parks, nature preserves, wildlife management areas, national forests, golf courses, recreation centers, etc."
And, and Mr. Henson, your question would be with regard to, to, to the definition of PRC?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that had nothing to do with that New Day Creek Trail.
Oh, no, no, I don't think, no.
Just to make it clear.
Well, that's, that's sacrosanct.
Okay, thank you very much.
You bet, sure. Any other comments from the audience? Okay, how about from the board? Okay, thank you, sir. And we'll, next one?
CP three-three consists of a parcel located on the south side of Lee Waters Road, east of Canton Road. Proposal is to go from industrial-compatible to medium-density residential. Planning commission recommends approval.
And is there comments or objections from the audience on Commissioner's proposal three-dash-three to be re-designated to medium-density residential? How about from the board?
Just a question, Jason, is it just that parcel that's turning MDR, or is it the whole gold area?
Well, the surrounding parcel on three sides of the subject of this item was the subject of ZD-ten, which was a rezoning for a single-family subdivision. So this is just, since that parcel was kind of left on an island, so to speak.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
It's just to make it the whole thing consistent.
This came in after the zoning for reset, for incorporation into the whole thing.
Okay.
So, I'm thinking C something. One's a ZD and one's a CP.
Right.
But they're the same. We're trying to make it all consistent.
And, and this, this particular item came after the September thirtieth cutoff for, for us to start compiling this information, so that's why it's in as a, as a commission proposal.
We all good on the board? Okay, good, alright, next one.
CP three-four is located south of Shiloh Road, east of Fry Road. Proposal is to go from community activity center to neighborhood activity center. Planning commission recommends approval.
And is there in the audience who'd like to comment on or object to Commissioner's proposal three-dash-four being re-designated to neighborhood activity center? See none? Okay.
CP three-five is also located south of Shiloh Road and east of Fry Road. The proposal is to go from... The proposal is to go from high-density residential to medium-density residential. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
And is there anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on or object to commercial proposal three dash five being re-designated to medium-density residential? And on the board, any comments? Thank you. Those are all yours.
Okay, we have six commission proposal items in Commission District Four. The first of which is CP four one, which is located on Six Flags Parkway near Lee Industrial Boulevard. The proposal is to add a text amendment to the priority industrial area for the subject parcels. The original text amendment reads as follows. "In an effort to lessen the negative impacts on adjacent residential neighborhoods caused by industrial uses along the east and west sides of Six Flags Parkway, west of Queens Ferry Place and Queens Ferry Drive, and to maintain the purpose and intent of the PIA, it is recommended that the Board of Commissioners consider industrial uses that foster innovative, high-technology, and low-pollution industries. As a, as an extra mitigation effort, it is also recommended that on the industrial side of the property, a natural or enhanced buffer and screening be established between the PIA and residential uses." Planning Commission recommended approval of that item with that text amendment. However, after additional conversations with the district commissioner, there's a proposed revision to the text amendment. I'll read that revision in its entirety. "In an effort to lessen the negative impacts on adjacent residential neighborhoods caused by industrial uses along the east and west side of Six Flags Parkway, west of Queens Ferry Place and Queens Ferry Drive, and to maintain the purpose and intent of the PIA, it is recommended that the Board of Commissioners consider the following when rezoning properties located within the PIA future land use category. One, industrial uses that foster innovative, high-technology, and low-pollution industries. Two, the use of stone, brick, and/or ephes on building facades. And three, the use of enhanced landscaping along primary road frontages to enhance aesthetics and mitigate negative impacts. To facilitate this, the Board of Commissioners encourages the assemblage of smaller land parcels into single tracks. Additionally, as a means of protection for area residences, the Board encourages transitional land uses that serve as a step-down from the more intense, heavy industrial uses to the less intense residential uses. Also, in instances where an industrial use is directly adjacent to residential uses, it is recommended that a natural or enhanced buffer be established on the industrial side of the property line."
So we're going to have to pull this and then bring it back and vote on it separately. Right. Because the Planning Commission didn't vote on that text. They voted on the one that we're going to, so we're going to go ahead and pull that and bring that back for a vote. Okay?
CP four two consists of four parcels on the south side of Hill Road, west of C.H. James Parkway. The proposal is to go from low-density residential to Neighborhood Activity Center. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Does anyone in the audience have any comments or objections to Commission's proposal four dash two being re-designated to, recommendation for re-designation to Neighborhood Activity Center? Seeing none?
CP four three consists of portions of two parcels, south of Spring Road and north of Veterans Memorial Highway. Proposal is to go from Neighborhood Activity Center to medium-density residential. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Does anyone in the audience have any comments or objections to Commission's proposal four dash three with regard to the re-designation of this parcel to medium-density residential? Yes, sure.
These two parcels are three individual parcels that are part of this comprehensive plan amendment. Are those actual parcels or is it the rare of-
It's the rare portion of those three parcels.
Okay, I presume that the owner of the parcel has noticed of this change, that part of his property, or his or her property would be in one designation and another in another designation.
Property owners who are directly impacted actually receive a letter from my office explaining what's happening in the process associated.
Okay. All right, no questions.
You good? Okay. Any other questions from the board? All right, sir.
CP four four consists of two parcels on the west side of Maxim Road. The proposal is to go from low-density residential to parks, recreation, and conservation. Planning Commission recommends approval.
And does anybody have, any of the audience have any questions or objections to the proposal, Commission's proposal four dash four for the, for that parcel to be re-designated to park, recreational, conservation? Anybody questions from the board?
No, just that it makes sense based off of the flood activity that we had earlier that this, this is a proper designation.
Great. Okay.
CP four five consists of multiple parcels on the south side of Powder Springs Road. The proposal is to go from industrial-compatible and priority industrial area to a Neighborhood Activity Center with the following text amendment. "In order to implement and promote a more compatible and practical land use for the area along Powder Springs Road near the intersection of Flint Hill Road and described in Map 4.31 Appendix Four of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, the Board of Commissioners is recommending a Neighborhood Activity Center. In addition, the Board of Commissioners is encouraging retail-type uses fronting Powder Springs Road with enhanced landscaping and architectural design. Office-type uses may be considered to the rear on the perimeter of the Neighborhood Activity Center with extensive buffering adjacent to existing residential uses. Planning Commission recommends approval."
Does anyone in the audience have a comment or objection to the proposal, Commission's proposal four dash five this land to be re-designated to Neighborhood Activity Center with a text amendment? Any questions from the board? Seeing none?
CP four six consists of multiple parcels on the south side of Powder Springs Road and Flint Hill Road. Proposal is to go from industrial-compatible and priority industrial area to Neighborhood Activity Center with the following text amendment. "In order to implement and promote a more compatible and practical land use for the area along Powder Springs Road near the intersection of Flint Hill Road and described in Map 4.31 Appendix Four of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, the Board of Commissioners is recommending a Neighborhood Activity Center. In addition, the Board of Commissioners is encouraging retail-type uses fronting Powder Springs Road with enhanced landscaping and architectural design. Office-type uses may be considered to the rear on the perimeter of the Neighborhood Activity Center with extensive buffering adjacent to existing residential uses. Planning Commission recommends approval."
Okay, is there any, one of the audience has any comments or objections? All right, yes, sir, would you like to have this pulled and discussed regularly? Do you have a comment? Let's take the easier way. Why don't you come up and comment? Let's see what happens from there, okay?
Yes. My name's Tim Welch. My dad owns the property 3339 Powder Springs Road. And we've had that, we run a asphalt paving company from that property. And behind us is a propane tank yard. And Mike Holbrook used, he was always adamantly opposed to any kind of development there that would bring a large number of people to that particular spot because he said, if this, Lord forbid, if the, something ever happened, he said, we're taking out a city block. And if you've got a few people here, it's better than having a shopping center there. So my, I just think that, you know, that's just a, it's bad to put more people there backed up against a tank farm. And that, that was one of my, it's always been a concern there.
Okay. Commissioner Cupid, I think you have a probably answer to that.
Yes, I can appreciate your concern. In fact, most members of the board are present when we had zoning for a butane tank that went adjacent to the existing petroleum area. And there was concern from the community. We had significant discussion with the applicant and the community to address the safety of their operation. Since that development, we've had, have had new housing development in that area and that continues to be a place of new commercial growth too. It's a significant commercial corridor at the intersection of East West Connector and Powder Springs. And, you know, with that forward momentum for a development, to limit that because of the safety of the butane tanks would, to me, seem to promote greater discussion about why have any development over there if this is such a safety concern? I think that, you know, we would not have supported those developments if there was that great a concern that the people that live there, the businesses that are there are at risk and-
Sure.
I, I, I'm, I'm very hesitant to limit the development that's going on there for that reason because it would, to me, it just prompts, again, a greater policy discussion about whether or not this whole community should be vacated if it, if it's that great a concern. And I think that concern was addressed when we had significant discussion about the safety of the operation there. But continue, sir.
Yes, ma'am. You're, I think you're talking about the big, the new big tanks on Anderson Farm.
Yes.
Well, on Industrial Drive, it runs parallel to Powder Springs Road, right there at Flint Hill. There is a propane yard there.
Okay, this is not what you're referring to. This is another, okay.
And it's probably, I mean, it's a different operation than the big tank. But they bring in propane with tractor-trailer trucks and store it in a huge tank right behind us.
Okay.
And that's the one I'm talking about.
Okay, I'm not familiar with the property, so what, you know, so I can get better educated about what you're talking about.
They were always adamantly opposed to any kind of shopping center being in that, that little stretch of Powder Springs Road.
Okay.
Because of that.
All right, so we'll go ahead and pull that one, based on your comments. And it's a great example of, if you come and ask us, you know, you bring us to some of our attention that we, we should look at. So I appreciate your, your comments, sir.
Thank you. And sir, if you can provide the address for that, you said it's right off of Industry, Industry Road? Okay, if you don't know the address, then we'll just drive down Industry Road. I presume this is visible from Industry Road? Okay. All right, thank you so much.
All right, so what I'd like to do now is, I saw someone who wanted to discuss Commission, Commission Proposal one dash one. Saw a hand at the back of the room. Yes, come on up, young lady. Just let us know who your name is, and you have three minutes.
My name is Claudia Puga, and I'm here for my sister.
Just pull your microphone a little bit closer. There you go.
Okay. My name is Claudia Puga, and I'm here for my sister. We weren't here at the first hearing, and we just wanted to know what are the plans from being a low-residential to medium-residential? I'm not sure what that means, so if, what are the plans for that zoning? Because she, she actually, well, she's one of the homeowners on Stanley Road, and there has been a lot of changes that she never thought that they could be so, so bad. So if you can explain what are the new changes for that?
For bad, she's talking about there's more density now than before?
Uh-
Is that her concern or?
No, the actual construction, because I think what they're, they're going to take more land. So basically, the road is going to be like right at her front door.
Okay, so, okay.
So I want to know, I mean-
I'll let Commissioner Weatherford address, respond to your question.
What she's referring to is a roundabout that was approved, between the county and City of Kennesaw, and part of that was land acquisition. So I'm not familiar with the residence is, but this is no proposed changes. It's a future land use, it's only a guide. And it says that this area is now going to, in the future, match, at least in our land use plan, what the City of Kennesaw has surrounding it. So there's really nothing planned for there at all. The road construction has been approved for years and it's underway. And, you know, the right-of-way acquisitions in her front yard, something should be done with DOT if she's not satisfied with that.
Okay.
But this has nothing to do with that. It's a roundabout on Stanley Road and it's Collins Road and-
So they're not really proposing any changes on the land right now?
Correct. That's correct.
So there's a roundabout at Collins Road and Stanley Road that, and then they're widening all the way across over to Stiles Road.
Can you show us on the map where, where your sister lives? Just give us an idea?
It's 1527 Stanley Road.
1527 Stanley Road, so. So is it, it's near where the, where the roundabout's going in? That's your concern?
Yes, because what they did, they, they, they did a sewer drain right in front of her house, which has caused a lot of problems to her. Two times, we had really bad rain last year. Two times, her house flooded and when it was under construction.
Right.
And she's been, I mean, having lots of problems with that. So she's wondering what the new development is going to be because of that.
What I'd like her to do is I'd like her to, is Shannon here?
Yeah. First of all, this is not anything future here, and if, I haven't heard from her, but if you would get ahold of our office, we'll be glad to handle it.
Shannon right here, she, she, she has immense powers in the county. And if you would get with this young lady on the very end and have your sister get with her, we'd like to address the problem on, on this that you talked about right now, okay?
Okay.
And then for your concerns about whether it's going to change the nature, there's no future plans right now to build on. It was just making it mirror what's in the rest of the area around it.
Okay, well, thank you for that.
Okay, sure, yeah, thanks for coming. Yeah, down there. But the roundabouts-
It's really the winding and the sewer and also curb and gutter and all that was part of the project.
Okay. Sure, go ahead.
Just for clarification, I would point out the difference of LDR and MDR with the density levels.
Right. What I was right there.
Ma'am, no, she may, I don't think she, I don't think she may understand what the changes are being proposed. And Jason, if you don't mind, clarifying-
Sure.
So that is underst, you know, understandable.
Sure, so the proposal is to go from low-density residential to medium-density residential. And that's just single-family detached residential uses, but the difference is density. The LDR goes from zero to, one to two, excuse me, one to two units per acre. And the medium-density residential goes from two and a half to five units per acre. So it's just a, a difference in how many houses would be fit together in one particular area or on one particular piece of land. Furthermore, you know, this area in question is completely surrounded by the city limits of Kennesaw. And what we have in our land use plan doesn't necessarily match what they have in there. So in order for the area to be more consistent, you know, we're proposing this change.
But they're not going to put a car, apartment, they're not going to put high-rises there. They're not going to put, you know-
Yeah, not, not at two and a half to five per acre.
There is the possibility in the future of being more houses per acre there. I want you to be aware of that, okay? But again, you could play the what-if game all day long. The bottom line is, is that it's, we looked at all this, we're trying to mirror what the rest of the community looks like. And where your, is your sister lives on the south side of the road? Is that where the arrow was before?
Where the reds.
Okay.
And is that city limits where her sister lived?
No, it's ours.
Not, the parcel next door is in the city limits, parcel to the west and to the south.
So she has that one house in the red, right? So what you might have is your, your sister, given the nature of the land, it's, and there's another house there already, right?
Yeah, it's all developed.
It's already developed, yeah, so.
Everything's-
The, what they'll have to have, they'd have to, to make it denser, they'd have to tear down those houses and put in more property in. I'm not, I'm not even, I don't do crystal balls very well. I thought, I thought Georgia was going to win the BCS Bowl, so. So I could, I'll probably be wrong again, yes, so. But I just want you to know that, yes, it does make the potential for more density, but you can see what they would have to do to have that happen. But the, the key thing for, a bigger thing for us, we want to make sure your sister, the drainage issues are taken care of. So please make sure she sees Shannon. So please make sure she sees Shannon, and we, we, we start taking care of that, okay? Thanks for coming today, I appreciate that. Okay, so here's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion, but I'm gonna read each of the CP numbers, okay? To make sure that I got the ones that we're pulling. And then we're, and we're gonna, we're gonna bring back, um, CP four-dash-one. And then we're gonna pull, uh, CP one's back on, right? And then CP two-dash-five. Oops, I'm sorry. Two-dash-seven, there you go, there you go, thank you. And, um, four-dash-four, we're gonna pull. So I'm gonna read those out by number, okay? So I make a motion that we, uh, we approve Commission Proposals, we approve the recommendations of Planning Commission for Commission Proposals one-dash-one, one-dash, uh, one-dash-two, one-dash-three, two-dash-one, two-dash-two, two-dash-three, two-dash-four, two-dash-five, two-dash-six, three-dash-one, three-dash-two, three-dash-three, three-dash-four, three-dash-five, four-dash-two, four-dash-three, four-dash-four, and four-dash-five. Do we have a second? We have a second? Any other discussion, call a question? That passes five to zero. So now I'm gonna have Commissioner Cupid come back with four-dash-one. And for, for the new, for the new text that you proposed.
Okay, yes, I'm gonna have, um, Jason Gaines read that in. I don't have the text in front of me, but I, I'll, if you can read it, I'll just make a motion based off of what you read as a text amendment.
Proposed text amendment for the priority industrial area in item CP four-one is as follows. "In an effort to lessen the negative impacts on adjacent residential neighborhoods caused by industrial uses along the east and west sides of Six Flags Parkway, west of Queens Ferry Place and Queens Ferry Drive, and to maintain the purpose and intent of the PIA, it is recommended that the Board of Commissioners consider the following when rezoning properties within the PIA future land use category. One, industrial uses that foster innovative, high-technology and low-pollution industries. Two, the use of stone, brick and/or ephesus on building facades. And three, the use of enhanced landscaping along primary road frontages to enhance aesthetics and mitigate negative impacts. To facilitate this, the Board encourages the assemblage of smaller land parcels into single tracks. And additionally, as a means of protection for area residences, the Board encourages transitional land uses that serve as a step down from the more intense, heavy industrial uses to the less intense residential uses. Also, in instances where an institutional or an industrial use is directly adjacent to residential uses, it is recommended that a natural or enhanced buffer be established on the industrial side of the property line."
All right. I move to support the approval of four-dash-one based on the revised text provided by staff.
Second? No discussion? No question? Passes five to zero. Okay, last one. Jason?
Okay. Our final item is a single staff proposal item, which is located in Commission District Two. Uh, as mentioned earlier by Commissioner Ott, this text amendment is, uh, directly related to, um, SP, uh, excuse me, Commission Proposal Items in his district, specifically CP two-four and CP, uh, two-three. Um, the proposed text amendment reads as follows. "In recognition of existing and changing conditions, a small commercial node has been created at the intersection of Atlanta Road and Cooper Lake Drive slash Gilmore Road. This is a northward expansion of the Neighborhood Activity Center at the Atlanta Road and Cumberland Parkway intersection. This node incorporates not only commercial uses but high-density residential at the northeast and southwest corners of the intersection. There is also a small section of medium-density residential at the northwest corner of the node. It is recommended that no further extension of the commercial node at this intersection be considered. This proposal also provides a transition from the commercial and higher-density residential uses to lower-density residential uses and less intense, excuse me, a transition from the hi, commercial and higher-density residential uses to lower-density residential and less intense uses. Planning Commission recommends approval of this item."
Just two different parcels?
This is, um, this is what I talked about earlier, that, um, CP two-point-four and two-point-three were ones that, what happened was, um, Jolie, my predecessor, changed pretty much all of Atlanta Road to medium-density residential, um, regardless of what was there.
Right.
So this is kinda going back and acknowledging the fact that there was already commercial on two-point-four, two-dash-four and two-dash-three.
Gotcha.
And so what we're doing is basically acknowledging we have two areas of high-density residential, and now two areas that have, um, Neighborhood Activity Center levels of commercial, and then just saying it's a node. And that's what we did in the CPs, but then this text amendment is saying that that's as big as the node should get.
Okay, all right. So does anybody from the audience have any question, uh, any objections or comments on staff proposal one? Yes, Ron, please.
Good morning, Commissioners, I'm Ron Siphon. And, um, just, uh, to add to Commissioner Ott's points that he just made, to me, the community is better off if there is a future zoning case that becomes controversial. We're better off with, uh, a defensible land use designation on the property than starting out with a land use designation that's flat-out not defensible because it, it's wrong. The, the, all Commissioner Ott is proposing is, or all this text is proposing is, both in the CP proposals as well as this, is, let's put the correct designation on the properties. They're not correct, and let's put limitations on it so that it's not spreading. So I, I would fully support this, this, uh, staff proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Is there any other comments from the audience? How about from the board? Okay, then, uh, I make a motion that we approve staff proposal SP dash-one. Have a second? Any comment? Call a question? Passes five to zero. Now, Linda, uh, you've been sitting over there, you know?
Oh, my.
I know.
I'm, I'm just leaving right now.
And you should, you should. And, and what's worse, it's on video.
I know, thank you.
There's no denying this one.
May I help you, Chairman?
Just go ahead and rub it in. Pile on, it's okay, I deserve it. Yes, please. Uh, on four-dash-six, since we, uh, I didn't make it part of my motion, I wanna make sure it's still in play. What would be the proper procedure for the Commissioner to bring that back? And, and also the one for his on the, on the tract of the wrong side of the land, of the highway?
Well, as, I believe that, um, Commissioner Cupid wants to do some investigation for four-dash-six.
Right.
So that would, I mean, the, the, the usual practice is simply that it would be done next year with the, with the amendments.
Okay, but we could bring her back sooner than that if we wanted to with an agenda item.
If, if you wanted to, yes, so long as, of course, the, the posting occurred as.
Right, okay. I just wanna make sure that we, that we can work in a timely fashion with hers. As we already know, we're, we're gonna do with his, so same procedure be for yours.
Yes, I would like to do it timely, within the next, yes, within the next month, so it's just.
Right, so the plan then is, um, that it'll be advertised with a fifteen days, um, to be heard at the Planning Commission meeting, which means the advertising will go up really soon. Um, it'll be heard at the Planning Commission as another business item, and then come on to the, the board as another business item also.
For this particular item, since it was advertised properly, really, the board is just holding it until it makes a final decision. In essence, by pulling it, you're holding it.
Okay, all right.
And then it can come back at another business or regular board meeting. Either one is an appropriate time, uh, for the board to consider that case.
Would that apply for Commissioner Ott's also?
No, sir, because it was advertised the wrong property.
Right.
Okay, so why don't we hold this particular item until, um, we'll, we'll just hold, yes, I don't even wanna put a date on it. Hold it until, um, there's been, uh, adequate investigation in this property to ter, to determine a path forward.
Right.
And will there, will there be another public hearing for that individual item?
The public hearing has been held, so it's not necessary, but that'll be up to the board's discretion.
Yeah.
And, and that's part of the reason. Well, well, that's part of the reason why, if you bring it forward as another business item, the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners, it automatically has time.
Oh, there you go.
Because you get the normal process for other business items.
Right. Are there any comments from the board? And I now close this, I call this public hearing closed.